Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular September meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. We had a unusually heavy agenda this month, so we were having two meetings this month. So you may want to check the agenda for tonight and make sure if you're here for a case that that case is being heard tonight. We are going to follow, for the most part, our usual procedure, which is to say we will call the cases in the order in which they are listed on the agenda. We will ask the appellant to step forward and be sworn in and be seated in the chairs to my right and offer any testimony that he or she would like us to hear. We ask them to confine their testimony to 10 minutes, if at all possible. We have a long agenda this evening, so out of courtesy to those who follow you, you will definitely be highly thought of if you confine yourself to your 10 minutes. We will then ask the appellant to step down, and we will solicit testimony from people in the audience, both for and against the appeal. We ask those people to confine their testimony to a five-minute interval. And then, following that, we will check in with code enforcement to see if there are any comments from code enforcement that should be in the record. And then, if there's been anything offered that appears to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification, not new evidence, prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. Under most circumstances, the board will act on each case before proceeding to the next. There is one anomaly this evening, which is the first case that is listed here. This is case 00802023, Seven Break-A-Day Drive. In this case, we have an appellant who is asking the zoning board to overturn the code enforcement officer's determination or the planning board's determination and/or the planning board's determination that the project in question was permitted by right in the zone for which it is planned. Unfortunately, in the in the case of that particular issue, we received a rather voluminous memo from one of the parties in the case this evening, or this afternoon morning, and one of our board members has not had a chance to review it. So we do not feel comfortable proceeding with that case until everybody has had a chance to read all of the information that's been submitted to us. And for that reason, I'm going to ask for a motion to table the case, or recess the case, excuse me, to our first meeting in October, which would be October 4th. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I would second it with the condition that no additional materials be submitted between now and then, so that we don't run into this position again next time in October.
Very well. Is that consistent with your motion?
It is.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Cable, or case number 00802023 is going to be recessed to October 4th. So if you are here for that case, you needn't remain. Next case is case 00492023, 151 Elm Street, Open Space Residential District, Jamie and Jacob Farwell owners. The owners wish to operate an automotive repair, service, and towing business and seek a variance to Article 2824 allowable principal and accessory uses in zoning districts to allow use J4 automotive repair service towing excluding and towing excluding bodywork. Is anyone here on behalf of the Farwells? Please come forward.
Mr. Carley, while they're setting up, I just want to disclose that one of the individuals who submitted a letter is a is a has been a client of mine and also a vendor of mine. I don't believe I have a conflict because it was one of many, many very similar letters, but I just wanted to disclose that, so if anyone has a concern, they can say that.
Does any board member have a concern?
No.
No.
Thank you.
As long as you're comfortable, I'm comfortable.
I am.
Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I will.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Daniel Mahler from Corbin, Bissin, Zalinski on behalf of Jacob and Jamie Farwell, the owners here. We are here at a rehearing on this matter. Essentially, even though the classification here is relatively broad in terms of what we're seeking a variance from, in truth, we're looking for relief for a far more limited use, specifically while we're here for automotive and towing. The Farwells do not do towing. They actually don't do automotive repair, per se. They repair and maintain motorcycles, and they do it on a very limited basis. Mr. Farwell is the principal employee of the business. His wife helps with the books and the like. This, they came onto this property at 151 Elm Street after their lease, and another part of Penna Cook had expired or had ceased due to a change in ownership. They bought this property, they built a new house on it. At the time that they had purchased it, there was an existing barn slash garage type structure on it. That structure was particularly appropriate for their particular use. It is located close to property belonging to the city of Concord. They have since that time, as I said, have built a single-family home. They also have some agricultural operations on the property, portions of the property are in current use, such that it's not likely to ever be expanded. In the interest of trying to keep to 10 minutes so that the board can move along here, my client is, A, willing to limit the use. One of the concerns that was raised the last time was with respect to traffic and noise, et cetera, sort of taking away from the residential character of the area. We are agreeable to conditions that would limit the use to the inside of the building. If you look at your zoning ordinance, there's actually contemplated things like this, that there will be outside storage. There will be no outside storage here, and we're willing to limit to that. Also willing to limit the number of employees. We're looking for permission for a small-scale business. We're willing for a condition be imposed to limit it to two employees. We do it here because Mr. Farwell does the principal work, his wife also helps with the books, so that there's no confusion down the road. We'd also be amenable to conditions that would essentially prevent an expansion of the building for purposes of expanding the business. So what you see today is what you'll see down the road. I would say that Mr. Farwell, I've spoken to some of his employee, or some of his, I should say, customers, I relayed a story that there's one who comes down from Webster, who travels Elm Street on a daily basis, did not even know the business was there. And that's sort of consistent with how this came to be. One of the questions last time is this, did this come here by complaint? The answer is no. The Farwells filed this application, even though they had been in the location for approximately six years at the point, there had been no complaints from anybody. When you go by this property, you see the single family in the front, you see this building, there is no signage. They're willing to keep the no signage, and there's agricultural things or operations to the back where they have livestock and the like. So from our perspective, in terms of scale, this is much more akin to the home occupations that are allowed in the zoning ordinance or in the zoning district under the ordinance. It is also a situation where you aren't going to change the character. As I said, people have gone by it, don't even know the business is there. The board should have some letters of support from some of the abutters in the area. The only other thing I will touch upon is the hardship. Obviously, you have a larger parcel here, but we're not relying upon that alone. When they bought it, there was this existing building, 35 by 75, which allows for this limited operation, usually have four to six bikes in there, to be stored completely indoor. So there is an existing development that basically made this particular use reasonable the property. They've since developed the residential aspect such that it looks residential, agricultural, as opposed to commercial. And we are basically willing to take any conditions that you feel necessary to keep it that way here. The other thing I would note in terms of hardship, in terms of existing conditions, that one building, it's not next to any other residential property that's in the area. It's actually next to land that is belongs to the city of Concord and is therefore unlikely to be developed over time. So given all of those features, we believe that this property's conditions make this particular use, particularly given our agreement that it can be limited to what the business actually is. We'll make this reasonable going forward. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'm trying to keep it brief.
Questions from the board? Andrew.
I wasn't at, I think, the original meeting. So how long have you been operating at this location?
Six years, sir. But I've been operating this Farwell cycle since 2009 in the city of Concord, previously at 382 Village Street, and then relocated to 151 Elm Street. While we were building the house, I was full-time employed at St. Paul's School in the maintenance department as we built our house, and I had stepped away a little bit from the scope of my customers down the road. And when you work on people's bikes, you become friends, and they followed me. And, you know, it truly is my passion, you know, so.
So you said that this was, coming forward now wasn't due to a complaint. Why are they coming forward now in particular?
They came forward, basically, the inquiry was made, he wants to do, be able to do inspections, state inspections, and want to make sure that he had all of the local approvals in place to be able to do that. And that's how it came to be.
And that is why. So in researching that, he realized he was out of zoning and wanted to try to make it right?
That's how it sort of came to be, yes.
Okay.
And just the only zoning for this is automotive and towing, even though he's only working on motorcycles.
Right. Got it. Other questions from the board? Laura?
No.
Jim?
Yeah, this, in the material you gave us, is an estimate for renovations. Was that for the business side of your property or the whole house, or?
I think the numbers given, if you refer to the motion for rehearing, the numbers were given that were for the, basically for the development of property in general, that when they acquired the property, as I indicated, the barn-type structure was already there. That's, so that was part of the allure, is that they could build the house there. And since it was a small-scale business, and that building was large enough to accommodate that business, that they go along. So the figures there were for, basically, for the purchase and what they've spent gaining the property where it is today. So it would include both the residential and commercial aspect of it.
Great, thanks.
Because they had to clean up the property when they bought it, et cetera.
And it is, it's not a big deal, it's identified as 30 River Road.
Oh, no. No.
Documented.
Nope. That shouldn't be in there.
Oh.
Sorry.
I didn't see. Pass it on, Tracey.
Yeah.
That was.
That must have been stuck in there.
Okay.
Sorry.
I will.
It sucked up on my desk.
Not considered.
What was, what was that you were looking at? Is that something that's in all our packets or just?
I didn't see it.
I don't know.
Okay.
It's stuck. Sorry.
Okay. No lunch orders or laundry lists in here?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Sometimes there's a couple of papers on my desk.
Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
At this point in time, I don't think I have anything else to add at this point.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your brevity. Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Please come forward. Oop, we got two of you. We'll take the nearest gentleman first, and then we'll take the second one.
Good evening.
Good evening. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but?
Absolutely.
May we have your name, please?
Al Brack.
How do you spell your last name, sir? What would you like us to know?
I'm just going to read some remarks that I wrote down. It'll be very quick. "I've known Jake since 2015, when he and his dad operated Farwell Motorcycle Shop on Village Street, which was adjacent to my office. When Jake and his father ran that operation, they were outstanding neighbors and always courteous. On numerous occasions, the other tenants in my building would comment on how good the neighbors were," and that was speaking of Jake and his dad. And I think that speaks volumes about the type of people Jake and his wife are. "Unfortunately, the building he used to be in was purchased, and the new owner forced everyone out with drastic increases in the rent, and the property has never been the same since, unfortunately." So when I found out Jake was purchasing the property on Elm Street to build his new residence, I was really elated. I live on Elm Street, and to know that he would be a neighbor, I was really excited. When I found out that he started working on motorcycles and small engines, again, this is when I really became excited, because Jake is a professional and does excellent work, and personally, the equipment he's worked on for me has never run better. I don't know if anybody here has taken the opportunity to stop by and look at Jake's home and his shop. It's set back off the street. His residence and shop show pride and ownership. If you just drive by, you would not have any idea at all that he runs a motorcycle repair shop there. There are no motorcycles left outside the building. The yard is clean and kept up beautifully. The shop is impeccable. I've been there numerous occasions. It's clean, well organized, and that says a lot for Jake as an owner. From a business standpoint, I can tell you his operation is extremely well managed, and I have firsthand knowledge, as Jake, like as I mentioned, on numerous occasions has fixed some equipment for me, my molar and four-wheeler. Honestly, as a young business owner, I'm extremely impressed with Jake and how he conducts himself and presents himself. I know the letters went out earlier this spring about a hearing asking neighbors to respond to operating an auto repair and towing business, of which this is not, but I did not receive that notice, so I couldn't be here. I'm also aware that he was previously denied the variance, as there was no unnecessary hardship burden by the use restriction. I would be the first on Elm Street to say, or have an issue if there was a large business operation going in next to my home. However, Jake's business has done nothing at all to change the character of our neighborhood. Unless someone told you, you would not know there was a business being conducted there and is a pertinent structure. The shop's set back down the driveway, there are no homes within sight of this property, with the exception of the neighbor that's directly across the street from him. There is no concern for impacts to the land, contaminants getting into anything. I'd heard this previously, and I thought it was a little bit ridiculous. He runs a clean shop, and there's just nothing to contaminate the land. There are no noise issues stemming from him operating there. I drive by there three to four times a day. If you're concerned about noise, just come, stop at my home on Elm Street and listen to the bikes and cars race up the street, commuting from Hopkinton through to Concord, racing down the street and doing burnouts. It's quite annoying. As far as this business being operated in a residential area, I certainly feel it's no different than a number of other home occupations in the area. You just drive around, take a look at them. The barn at Bull Meadow that causes a lot of noise when they're having weddings down there, there's a lot of businesses that are running equipment, selling product out of the yard, not requiring any type of variance. Jake's built this business, and I know he intends to keep it to a one-person operation. This is a small, well-run motorcycle, small-engine repair business, and in my mind, has absolutely no impact to the character of the neighborhood, nor would it interfere with the neighbors. Last but not least, in a time when big government is causing many small businesses to close, I think we need to rethink and consider different options. I work with a number of numerous, or I've worked with numerous small business owners in and around the Concord area, and personally... in and around the Concord area, and have personally witnessed numerous businesses closing for many different reasons over the last couple of years. We need more small business owners offering services such as what Jake offers. I'm proud to have Jake as a neighbor, and I would ask for your consideration in allowing this variance for Jake to operate this small operation out of his pertinent structure. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. There was someone else who wanted to be heard, I believe.
I don't really need to say anything, because he said it all.
Well, excellent. Swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Give us your name and sit down.
I do. James Bidwell, 184 Elm Street.
Is there anything you'd like to add, or would you just like to reinforce what you just?
Reinforce, but also Jake keeps a clean yard, clean business. And the equipment that has come out of there, for my personal use, is just as clean. He's very cautious on what he does and how he operates. I fully stand behind his decision.
Thank you very much.
And Al, thanks for coming up before me.
I got a quick question.
Thank you.
Did you submit a letter?
I did.
Okay, because I recognize your name from the records. Thank you.
Okay.
Someone else wish to be heard in favor? Yes, sir. Nope, I got one back here. Swear to tell the truth?
Absolutely.
May we have your name, please?
My name is Arthur Rivet, and I'm very nervous. But I want to tell you...
Not to worry.
But pardon me?
Not to worry. We're a friendly neighborhood zoning board.
You won't find a more stand-up guy than this guy behind me and his wife. The only reason we're probably here is because he wants to do it right. And he's about responsibility and sustainability. If you go over to his house, you will see their vegetable garden. You will see the way they take care of their property. And I think there's a couple of things going against him right here. And one of the things is the way he fits in the ordinance with towing and auto repair automatically would say to people, oh, we don't want that. And so I get that, because I don't want towing and auto repair. But that seems to be what he has to fit under to achieve what he wants to achieve. He doesn't want to tow or do auto repair. The other thing, I think, is, you know, I don't think it's a secret that Elm Street is a cut-through for a lot of people, and they fly. And a lot of those people, or a bulk of those people, are on motorcycles. And I, I think that maybe a motorcycle shop on motorcycles, and we get all these motorcycles flying through, but those bikes have nothing to do with what Jake's doing. They cut through, motorcycle weekend, 30 Harleys flying down the road are not going to Jake's shop. And so I just, I just want to say that. And the first two speakers, I echo everything they said.
Thank you very much.
Question. Did you submit a letter also?
Yes, I did.
123 Elm Street?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward.
Swear to tell the truth?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I come before you...
May we have your name, please?
Yeah. I apologize. My name is Christopher Casco. I live on Wedgewood Drive here in Concord. I come before you as a longtime motorcyclist and a consumer of these types of services. I submitted written comments, so I'll largely stand on my written comment. But I just want to make two points. The first is that I think not allowing this variance would constitute an undue hardship to Mr. Farwell, because he operated a similar business in close proximity to where his property is now. And I think a homeowner purchasing a property so close to where he was able to do a very small business, largely a family business with limited impact, should be able to rely on moving a short distance away and being able to continue with that business. The other point is that I think it's in the same zoning district. There's a wedding venue off of Bog Road that I didn't even know was there until I was running alongside the rail trail that goes right alongside this venue. And that is my understanding that that venue was granted a variance. So I think if a venue of that nature is able to exist properly in this neighborhood, Mr. Farwell's business can do the same. It has minimal impact. As someone who, who has a motorcycle and utilizes the service, it's during normal business hours. You're not going back and forth to the business. You're driving, dropping a bike off first thing in the morning, picking it up in the afternoon. It's seasonal, and you're, you're otherwise, it's not a high-traffic type of an operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Any comments from code, excuse me, any comments from code enforcement?
Nothing additional.
We do have, in the file, and there are lots of submissions from interested parties, and I won't read them all, because it would take until breakfast. But there were 27 people who submitted a letter, which is actually drafted originally, I believe, by Mr. Farwell in support. Almost all of them are on, live on Elm Street. There are two that live on Peaceful Lane, one on Sweat Street, one who didn't give an address, one on Chandler Street, and one on Eel Street. We also have some other correspondence here. We have an email from Jeff and Christie Tobine of Bog Road, who are in favor of the appeal. We have an email from, let's see... Oh, Chris Casco, who just spoke, who's in favor of the appeal. We have an email from Dennis Soucy, 166 Elm Street, who is not in favor of the appeal. We have an email from Jeremy and Jane Lauren, who are not in favor of the appeal, and specify traffic and speed as their main concerns, as well as it being inconsistent, the proposed use being consistent with the zone. And we have one from James Murphy, 166 Elm Street, who is not in favor of the appeal, because he's concerned that the variance would go with the land. He's concerned that a new owner might not observe conditions that the old owner had agreed to. We have one from Andrew Stout, who is not in favor of the appeal, indicating that he does not believe that neighbor's support should dictate zoning rules. We have one from Angel Gonzalez of, I believe, Bog Road, who is in favor of the appeal. And from Lawrence Boucher, 126 Elm Street, who's in favor of the appeal. And Bill Fitzgerald, who just gives his address as Pinnacle, who is in favor of the appeal. And Dennis Goodman, who is in favor of the appeal. If you want any of the details, all of that is in the file. Since no one spoke against, we will consider the public testimony portion of the hearing closed, and I will ask the board to give us the benefit of their thoughts on this, starting with Mr. Winters.
Well, I wasn't here for the, for the initial session. I think I have a sense of what, why the decision was made at that time. And I, of course, agree that it's not a majority vote. It doesn't matter how many letters there are. However, I do think that the number of neighbors who wrote letters or spoke really corroborates the good faith in the, the statement of the applicant, that this is limited in scope, as he described, both in terms of the size of the engines he's working on, the cleanliness of the operation and the impact, as well as the distance from, from the road and the, and the minimal traffic. And we've had this, we've asked this question multiple times. I don't think we have to ask it again. The representations of the applicant are going to be binding on any type of variance like this. So it is true, it runs with the land, but it's not as if, you know, someone could buy it and, you know, start repairing full-size automobiles or towing. So therefore, I'd be inclined to approve the variance.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
I have no doubt that the Farrell's are good people and run a good business, a clean business. And I agree that anyone who buys the property is going to be bound by the conditions of approval. But this isn't about the Farrell's, and it isn't about future owners. It's about the land. And for me, I don't see the fact that there's an old barn on the property that's particularly well-suited for this purpose as a special circumstance that justifies the grant of a variance. So for me, I would still vote to deny based on hardship.
Mr. Morgan?
I was not here for the original conversation around this, but it strikes me that there's a little bit of a square peg run hole issue here, in that we're looking at this, and it was looked at in the context of towing automobile repair, whereas a much smaller, almost a home business. So it's, with that in mind, that I'm inclined to find a way to get the yes on this application.
Mr. Walker?
I tend to agree with, with Jim. I think I remember from the last meeting that I heard that there was no other repair facility available in the Concord area for motorcycles. And in the sense, to me, that that's a hardship on the community. I don't know if we can consider that or not, but that's sort of my take on it.
You can.
So I'm inclined to support this. I think we've heard that they're making every single effort to, to blend in, and I think it'll pretty much be an invisible operation to the community.
Much as it goes against my personal preference, I have to agree with Ms. Specter Morgan, that I don't see the hardship that bears on the property. I would not be terribly upset to see the vote go against me, but I'm not, I, I'm not comfortable changing my vote from the way I voted the last time.
Would anyone care to make a motion?
I would move to approve the variance.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Would you like to incorporate your earlier remarks into your motion, both in terms of conditions and also the rationale?
Yes, yeah, and I think...
Those are the conditions they agreed to?
Yeah, just for the record, the, thank you. The conditions that were mentioned by the applicant are all the work will be inside the barn. There's going to be no outside storage. There'll be no expansion of the building. There'll be no signage. And I can't read number three.
Two employees.
Maximum of two employees, which are the, the husband and wife.
Yes.
So, so no employees outside the family. So I do, I do think it would be an undue hardship not to allow them to continue this family business in, in this limited scope. So I think that meets, it meets the criteria.
All right. It's been moved and seconded, I believe, or is it been seconded?
It's been me.
Yep. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No? The vote is three to two. The motion carries. The variance is granted. That doesn't happen very often.
That's a first.
What was that?
[laughing]
That doesn't happen often.
Should be encouraged, I think.
I wasn't going to.
Next case.
I gave a little clap, too.
The next case this evening is case 0070, 2023, 7 Federal, 7 Federal Street, CVP, Civic Performance District. Nonas Parking Realty LLC is the owner. The owner wishes to establish an off-street parking space and request a variance to Article 2877-G setback and restrictions to permit a space with a zero-foot setback where five feet is required. And there is a companion case, if I have this correct, Tracy, which is case 0090, 2023, 1 Federal Street, CVP, Civic Performance District, Nonas Parking Realty LLC owner. The owner wishes to establish an off-street parking space and request variances to Article 2877-G setback and restrictions to permit a space with an approximately two-foot setback where five feet is required. Article 2877-A standard parking spaces to permit the previously approved, double, 0092022, parking space to be substandard at 15 by eight feet, or nine feet by 19 feet is required. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, Mr. Hastings?
I do.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Phil. Thank you. My name is Philip Hastings. I'm an attorney with Cleveland Warren's in Bass. I'm here tonight for these two variance applications on behalf of Nonas Parking Realty LLC. Many of you know the owner of, of Nonas, which is Remy Hinge, who's been here many times, most recently when he, after he bought the property at 1 Federal Street. I've got a couple of handouts. I guess the photograph that you see on your screen is not entirely up to date. So I'll pass that around. And then I have also a series of photographs of the neighborhood in general. And I believe you have the parking plan that was submitted with the application.
We did, but to tell you the truth, I couldn't make it out.
What's the difference?
The difference is, you're looking, you're looking at this?
Yep.
There's the parking plan. Great. The, there was a bump out on the porch?
Okay.
That's been removed.
Okay.
So it creates a little more depth to the parking, the proposed parking spot.
I see. Thank you.
If I couldn't make it out, I meant that, the drawing's perfectly clear, but it wasn't clear to me what parking spaces we were talking about and where they were.
So, Nonas Parking Realty owns both the property at the corner of Federal and Pleasant Street, which is the old Paul Maggiato Law Office, and the one next to that, which is 7 Federal Street. Both of these properties now are two-family residences on a fairly narrow street. In 2022, the ZBA granted variances to permit 1 Federal Street to be converted from its law office use to the residential use. And one of those variances was to allow the single off-street parking space that you see in the, in the middle of that, the screen, in front of the stairs. You'll see in the photograph, it's paved. That was historically the only parking spot used when it was an office use. You granted a variance, even though the two-family residents would have required four off-street parking spaces. You allowed the, the one. There's been no changes to that parking space since that conversion. 7 Federal Street, the property next to it, has never had any off-street parking. My understanding is it's a grandfathered, non-conforming use. It's been residential, as far as I, I know. So the plan is to remove the curbing that's in front of, really in front of 1 Federal Street, to create spaces for two parking, for two cars total. One would be the existing space for 1 Federal. The other would be the, it's a paved area now, next to the porch, serving 7 Federal.
Wait, I'm sorry. Paul Maggiato's old building is what, which address?
Is 1.
But Remy owns that now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So they're, they're both in common ownership. The existing parking space on 1 Federal is 15 feet by eight feet. The new parking space that would go next to it and would partially straddle the property line would be 16 feet by eight feet. Because they're substandard in size, they both would require backing onto the street, and it straddles the property line. The new parking space straddles the parking line. We need variances from a handful of provisions under your parking regulations and the zoning ordinance. There's some question, Ms. Hutton and I had exchanged some emails earlier on, whether a variance was needed for the existing space at, at 1 Federal Street because of the size. Again, we're not changing any of that size. Again, we're not changing any of that size, so I'm not sure we actually need a variance in that regard, but we're, we're here really for an overall parking plan for the two properties. So we did apply for the variance for both, both parcels, and without waiving any of those, those rights that we may have with respect to One Federal, we'd ask for a variance. We understand that any variance would be conditioned on an easement agreement between the two properties because it does straddle the property line.
So Seven Federal currently has no parking?
Correct.
And basically, you're just looking to put two cars in this space?
Exactly.
Is this photograph of Seven Federal, is this the other side of the building?
This is the, the series of photographs that you have that I took from Google, Google Maps, that's directly across the street from Seven Federal.
Oh.
And if, if you look through, I don't know why this is stapled this way, but as you proceed, you've got a northerly view down the street, you can see similar parking arrangements at the next parcel down, at 14 Federal Street, again, a similar parking arrangement, 11 Federal Street, 19 Federal Street. So the, in terms of parking, the defining characteristic of Federal Street, the immediate neighborhood, is these small substandard spots directly off the road with backing onto the street. And if you've driven around in that area, it's right across from the courthouse, you, you can see why. It's just very narrow, the buildings are very densely put together, those are the existing conditions. So this is, this is really an attempt to create a space where there's not a space. It would be very helpful for at least one of the tenants at Seven Federal to have a parking spot off the street and in proximity to their residence. It's consistent with the spirit and the purpose of the ordinance to encourage off-street parking. The initial, the additional spot will not diminish the value of any of the neighboring properties. So for tho, those reasons, we'd ask that you support both of the variance requests.
Questions from the board?
I, I have no recollection. Maybe I wasn't at the meeting when we approved the conversion of One Federal to a multifamily, but wasn't parking, was there a parking, parking variance granted then? Because isn't some parking at least required?
Yeah, there, it was an odd situation with the conversion from office to residential because the office use would have required eight, if my recollection is correct, eight off-street parking requirements. It was grandfathered for the one, and now we were changing the use from office to residential, and the determination then was we needed a variance for the parking, even though we weren't changing the parking and we were, in some sense, reducing the nonconformity from eight to four. So that's why the variance was granted back in December of last year.
So a variance was approved to allow only one spot?
To allow one.
Where four would be required, but now you want to change, to ask for variance, to add a spot?
Well, we're partially adding a spot on One Federal Street, but entirely to serve Seven Federal Street.
Oh.
We're not adding parking for, for One Federal, we're keeping that essentially unchanged.
So where are all those tenants, where are those tenants parked? Are they the street parking or?
They park on, on the street now. We're, we're not, for the two, if you look at it as a combined, two buildings, four apartments, you have one off-street parking spot now in front of One Federal. The proposal would be to create a second off-street parking spot.
Other questions? Nick? Jim?
No, I'm good.
What's that?
So, sorry, so it's really, it's just kind of more his business decision to give both of those to Seven, it could easily, he could switch them.
No, I may have misspoke, though the one is still remaining on One Federal.
So he's going to have one to each building?
He's gonna, right, one to each building, correct.
You didn't misspeak, I, right, I.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who would like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comment from code enforcement?
Uh, yeah. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear. This line, right there is the property line between the two properties. So what would have been a conforming width on One Federal Street is now giving some of its parking space width to the abutting property. That's why they both needed a variance, because that parking space on One is technically becoming more nonconforming because it's giving up some of its width to next door. The reason that this came to the zoning board is because they had applied to remove the curbing with the driveway permit to engineering, and engineering obviously couldn't issue that permit because it doesn't comply with the ordinance. So we're adding, we're adding another parking space that's backing into the street, that's not wide enough, that's not long enough. So for those reasons, the, the variance is required, and what you do with it is yours. I just want to make sure that you are clear on where the property line, because it is hard to grasp this plan the way it-
Thank you very much for clarifying that.
Yeah.
I, I read the appeal about six times, trying to figure out what the heck was going on. Okay.
Looking at how buried the curb is, they could probably just keep driving over it.
Yeah, I don't think we want to encourage that.
I have one other question, now that we've brought this up. Is, is there on-street parking on Federal?
There's not enough room.
There's not enough room, I don't think.
Yeah.
But is it per- So it's not permitted?
I don't think it's permitted.
I don't see any, but.
Here is on-street on Pleasant.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a tiny road.
Yeah.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for variances for two unorthodox parking spaces. We heard testimony that it's the only place they can go, and that there are similar ones up and down the street because of the nature of the neighborhood. I'm going to start this one with Mr. Warner.
Great. Well, certainly the hardship is, I'm persuaded of the hardship because Federal Street is probably one of the narrow streets in Concord, and it creates a very unique situation in terms of parking. And anytime we can add parking to that area, I think alleviates, or speaks to the hardship issue. So I would tend to support it.
Mr. Mahoney?
Well, I have nothing to add to Mr. Warner's comments.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
I have plenty to add, but I can do it in the form of a motion.
Okay. I like that. Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I mean, I hate to say it, it's, it's probably the variance, the request of variance is probably memorializing what's going to happen almost no matter what, because parking's terrible in that situation. It's, it's not, it's not really safe to have people backing up there, but, you know, the people who live, people live there, they're going to want to park, there's no, there's no good on-street parking. So I, I, I do kind of agree with Nick that I, I think it's, it's a hardship to basically have a residential properties that have limited or zero parking.
I agree with Andrew, Nick, and Jim. And I probably will agree with Laura, but I haven't heard what she has to say.
Would it be okay for me to make a motion?
Yeah, would you care to, please?
I would move to approve both requested variances. This is not contrary to the public interest and is keeping with the spirit of the ordinance because it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, it is consistent with it. Substantial justice is done because there is no harm to the public from granting these variances. I agree that there will be no diminution of surrounding property values, and I think there are special circumstances in that there is no on-street parking, no existing parking. It's a small lot, and there's nowhere else to put it, and it's certainly a reasonable use. So I would move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous? The variances, variance says, I believe, are granted. Yes, there were two. You're welcome.
I won't clap.
Feel free. We love the praise. Now, that's not a nice thing to say. Double zero seventy-five, 2023, 27 Merrimack Street, Pennacook RN Neighborhood Residential District, Tyler Stratton owner. The owner wishes to establish the home as a two-family structure and requests a variance to Article 28452, duplex or two-family dwellings, for a lot having 60 feet of frontage where 120 feet is required, and 10,000 square feet of lot area where 15,000 square feet are required. Is Mr. Stratton or anyone representing him here? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes.
Please have a seat and give us your names.
My name is Tyler Stratt.
Krista Bouchard.
What would you like us to know?
I am looking to convert my single-family home located at 27 Merrimack Street in Pennacook, New Hampshire, to a two-unit apartment. The plan is to have the second unit available for a family to move into. The property does have four to seven parking spaces in a neighborhood that is, have abundance of multifamily homes. The house is already suited for a two-family home, including two kitchens, and the first unit will be a two-bedroom, one bath, and the second unit will be a three-bedroom, one and a half bath.
You could do an ADU here, I believe, is that correct, Dr. Hutton?
No, and I don't remember why.
Was it the size of the unit?
I think it's the size of the unit.
How big is the unit that you would be creating, the, the smaller of the two units that you would be creating?
The smaller unit is two-bedroom, one bath.
Square footage?
It's around 1,000 square feet.
1,000 square feet.
If it was AD, it was like 600?
750.
750, 6 to 750.
Are there separate entrances to the each?
The, there's one entrance in the front door that, in the staircase to the second unit, and then the first floor is the unit I'll be living in.
Interesting, there's two kitchens. Was it a two-family house at one point?
It, when I bought the house three months ago, it said it was-
Said it was approved by the board to be converted back into a two-family?
Do you know when?
We, we are not sure.
We did some research, and we never saw it as a two-family after we bought the house.
Oh, it just said that in the listing?
Yes, in the listing, it said, that's the big reason why I bought the house, that I want to buy a two-family.
But it had never been a two-family, or it was once a two-family?
The listing said it was a two-family, but when we did our research, it, we never saw it listed as a two-family.
There was no record of it.
Correct.
No record of it, but it is suited inside the house as it was, it looked like it was a two-family.
Right, otherwise you have a mystery kitchen.
Correct.
So, so you're not going to be adding on any space, you're just reconfiguring the existing house?
Correct, yes.
And is it your intention to live there for the foreseeable future, or is this potentially you would rent out both sides?
We're going to be living for the foreseeable future in the, in the first unit, in the first floor.
Would you be agreeable to a condition of approval that the owner of the property always occupy one of the units? So-
I'm a brand-new husband.
No, that's fine. So with an accessory dwelling unit, one of the conditions of approval is generally that the owner of the property has to live in one of the two units.
Okay.
And I was wondering if you would agree to that condition of approval here, which would mean both units could not be rented at the same time. The owner would have to live in one, and the other one could be rented.
Yes.
You'd be agreeable to that?
Yes.
Are you agreeable to that? Okay.
I might not be.
Okay.
Are there other two-family houses in, I'm not familiar with the neighborhood, but are there other two-family homes on your street?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
There's abundant several.
I think we are the only single-family within the, the street. There's, there's even bigger.
Yeah. And what's, do you know what year the house was built?
1908.
Say it again, sorry?
It was built in 1908.
1908, thank you. So, so Tracy, two families are allowed in this zone, it's just an issue of frontage?
There's not, right, because you have to have one and a half times the frontage and lot area to be a two-family.
And does the city have any records of it ever having been an approved duplex?
I think it may have been a two-family a long time ago. Once it was converted to a single, obviously it loses its ability to be a two-family without a variance.
Right, that would explain the kitchen.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Please come forward.
Good evening, how are you tonight?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
May we have your name, please?
Joe Williams.
What would you like us to know? Please have a seat. What would you like us to know?
I'd just like to let you know that with Tyler and Krista, that what they're starting to do here is they're just at the beginning stages of starting out in the course that we've all taken in life. And with this here, he's actually put a lot of work into this, a lot of effort. He's come to me and helped them with the variance process and everything like that, in order to be able to move forward towards a two-family here. So I'd just like you to take into consideration that there's a lot of stuff in the neighborhood that is already a multifamily or two-family, and they have the way with which they get it happen, and just increase the property value of that neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard in favor? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes.
May we have your name, please?
Phil Scordato.
Scordato?
Yes, S-C-O-R-D-A-T-O.
Was your first name again, I'm sorry?
Phil.
Thank you.
What would you like us to know?
I, so I live on Walnut Street, the next block over, on kind of behind this property, sort kitty-corner. So in a similar fashion, just thinking down the road about my family and possibly having parents stay on my property, things like that, I got this letter about, notice about the hearing, so I thought it was interesting about the two families, and I thought I would be in favor of this as a precedence in case I ever needed a variance for my property. So that was just my thoughts. I know it doesn't always work like that.
Don't be a precedent, right?
But-
We're not the Supreme Court, we're not allowed to-
I understand that, but, but just to have another case about a similar, similar issue in the area, so that's all.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Do I see a hand? No. Any comment?
Nothing additional at this time.
Very good. With that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and I'll invite the board to mull this one over, starting with Mr. Mahoney.
Uh, yeah, I think there's, what they're attempting to do with the property is consistent with the neighborhood. There is, while there's not a record of it, there's evidence that this historically has, was probably a, a two-family home, and I think it's, the frontage issues would seem to just, it seems to be similar to the rest of the neighborhood, so I don't think it's, it's a burden on it. And then just in answer to the, I'm assuming that the other two-family homes in the, in the neighborhood do not have the restriction that the owner occupied, and so I'm not making that part of my motion at this point.
Very good. Is there a second?
Oh, did I make a motion? Yes, that's what I think.
You didn't actually make a motion.
No, you didn't. Actually, you just had something to say.
Yeah, yeah, I will make a motion when the time is correct, yeah.
All right, well, Ms. Specter Morgan, what are your thoughts on this?
I agree. I think that the second kitchen, you know, is evidence of special circumstances. It's certainly consistent with the rest of the neighborhood, and it does look like it's a narrower and smaller lot than all the other ones, so.
Mr. Winters?
I also agree.
Dito, it is indeed one of the smallest lots in the whole area, so I'm certainly inclined to support that.
Having already tipped my hand, I agree with my colleagues. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'm moving to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted.
Are you good on findings for that one?
I am.
Okay.
Okay.
Very nice discussion beforehand, the motion.
All right, that brings us to case double zero seventy-nine, 2023, 10 Drew Street, Single Family Residential District, Georgia Carthanasus, 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 I apologize for mangling that. Who is the owner?
Carathanasus.
Carathanasus?
Carathanasus, right.
Carathanasus. I've mangled it twice. I apologize twice. The owner seeks a special exception as permitted by Article 2824, Table of Principal Uses, to create an accessory dwelling unit ADU within the confines of an existing single-family dwelling. Do you swear to tell the whole truth? Please have a seat. I assume I am speaking to Mrs. swear to tell the whole truth? Please have a seat. I assume I am speaking to Mrs. Carath- Carathanasus.
Yes, you are. Thank you. Um, thank you for taking the time to meet with me tonight. Um, I've lived in Concord my entire life and my parents immigrated here from Greece in the late sixties and worked really hard and they were able to buy their own rental property. My father has about 53 years of experience, so he could teach me a lot. Um, my parents encouraged me to go to a hairdressing school and I ran and had my own business for about 25 years. Um, I was granted a variance to have my business in front of my home a couple of years back and then COVID hit and unfortunately I had to close the business down. Um, the space is empty right now and I was hoping, you know, to put a little studio in there. Um, there's not much I have to do to it, uh, just to put in a little kitchenette and a shower bath and a parking, a, a new parking space. And, um, that was the last, the last time I was here in June, they recommended that. I do that, which I will do. Um, so the last couple of years I've been working in a nursing home, which I love, although, you know, I've taken a significant pay cut, um, you know, to pursue this work. I really enjoy it and want to continue. Um, but I, I'm proud of all the improvements that I've done on my home since 2016. Um, the apartment in the area, um, I mean, all the apartments in this area are overpriced. Um, so it's, there's not much to choose from and I intend on having everything up to, to code to ensure, you know, the, um, the safe environment for my tenant, my neighbors. Um, so that's it.
Where is Drew Street?
Um, it's right off Loudon Road in Concord.
After Pizza Hut.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, behind Pizza Hut.
I, I know. I know where you are now. Okay. Behind Pizza Hut?
Yes.
Got it. Questions from the board? Yes?
Um, can I just run through the special exception criteria with you just to make sure we're all set?
Sure.
Um, how big is the ADU? How many square feet?
How many square feet? It is, let's see, I have to find my class. I'm sorry. Um, there's the main living space, which is nineteen and a half by eleven and a half wide, and then the bathroom is eleven...
Let me stop you right there. Have you already calculated this, Dr. Hutton?
Yeah, I'm looking for where it was in the memo.
Oh, okay.
Because you're throwing a lot of math at me.
Oh, okay.
We calculated this many times to make sure that it was...
Was correct, yeah.
So you're satisfied that it's...
I am satisfied that the square footage is correct.
Okay.
That was probably the thrust of it.
That was the thrust of mine. There's two bedrooms?
Um, there is. So one is, yeah, there's the large room and then the bathroom. It's a, it used to be a half bedroom.
I see two bedrooms on the sketch, that's why I'm asking.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Is there a wall, a common wall and a door?
There are two doors, but we're going to close those off.
Both of them?
Yes. And then there's a front, there's an entrance for them to come into.
You have to have one interior door connecting the two spaces, so you can only close off one of the doors?
One of the doors?
Yep.
Okay, I, I heard two, but okay. I'm glad you said that.
Must have one interior door.
Okay.
Okay. I assume it meets the lot size, Dr. Hutton?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you understand that the owner will have to occupy one of the units?
Yes, yes, which I intend to, yep.
And how many parking spaces are you supplying?
Um, so because it's a studio for one person, it's going to be one additional parking space.
And how many are currently there?
Uh, two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Please come forward. You can sit in either place. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes.
May we have your name, please?
Sarah Pratt.
What would you like us to know, Ms. Pratt?
Um, I think it's important the board know a few things about Georgia that she is far too humble to share herself. Um, I've known Georgia for...
You've only got five minutes.
I know. I'll be quick. I'll try to be quick. Um, I've known Georgia for over 20 years. We've been best friends and, um, she is most certainly the best person I know. She's somebody, as she mentioned, who's the daughter of an immigrant. Um, she didn't speak any English when she first went to school in Concord, uh, because her parents didn't speak English, but, you know, she's worked really hard her whole life. She's followed her parents' example, who've worked really hard their whole lives and have been, you know, as she mentioned, have lots of experience as landlords, and I think that's a real asset for her as she, um, is asking to follow suit and become landlord herself. She, um, she's an extremely responsible person. As she mentioned, she had her own business as a hairstylist. Um, you know, she was renting stalls for a while, but, but keeping her own books, so she knows how to keep books and manage money and manage a business in that way. Um, as she mentioned, she came here to get the variance to create the business in her home and, uh, and then COVID hit and she, I mean, all hairdressers had to cease working, right? I mean, it just, nobody, nobody was open. Um, she, she spent that time, you know, building out the, because she had just gotten the variance, building out the stu-, the salon in her home and she's, her home is immaculate. I mean, she's worked so hard on that home, just in general, you know, not just the salon, but her home is totally immaculate. If you looked at the house the way it was when she bought it and the way it is now, you'd think there was a gardener outside doing the landscaping. I mean, it's just so gorgeous. Um, and, you know, she, COVID, the restrictions came up and, and she was allowed to go back to work and, I mean, she followed every...
I, I think we're getting your drift.
Yeah, she, but let me just finish. Let me finish. I mean, she followed every rule, you know, she's, she's all by herself in this salon, but, I mean, she wouldn't dream of not following the rules. Like, she is a total rule follower. Um, but she, she's also somebody with a huge heart and during COVID, I mean, the two of us would watch TV and watch old people dying in hospitals and nursing homes by themselves. And she just, she kind of had always had this passion for working with older people and I'm, I'm...
Ms. Pratt?
Yeah. One, one more, one more comment.
It's not contributing to the effort. You're not discussing things that we can act on.
Okay, but, but no, and John, I'm just...
We appreciate how much affection you have for her.
But the last thing I want to say is I'm just, I'm very proud of her that she pursued this dream to go and work at the nursing home, but she did take a huge pay cut. It's really hard to make ends meet given how much less money she, so she really needs this source of income in order to continue doing the work that she's doing, which is so undervalued in this country unfortunately and it's really...
Thank you very much.
So anyway, that's my parting comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. May, may we have your name, please?
I've learned some all these years, been, been in this country 55 years and I've been landlord for 53 years. I was, Georgia is my daughter and I'd like to help her very much to succeed like I do. Thank you. I have you all. There I be all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Any comments from code enforcement?
I'd just like to add that since the last time you saw Georgia, she has worked with engineering to make sure that that parking space was going to be approvable with the driveway permit. So she did go through that step to make sure that, because that was one of your concerns was the parking. So she did see engineering on that.
With the, I mean, for the hairdressing salon?
No, for the, for, this originally came to you as a second dwelling unit when we discovered it had enough, a small enough amount of square footage that it could be a special exception. So this is actually the second time you're seeing this.
Oh, okay.
So, but what, parking was one of the issues you had. So she went to engineering to make sure that that was an approvable parking space.
Did we rule on it?
We denied it. You did not. Yeah, you did. You denied it.
Denied it.
Oh, we denied a two-family?
As a two-family, correct.
And then you realized she could come back for an ADU?
Yeah.
Well, okay, I, I must have missed that meeting too. Either that or I'm just...
They're all blending together.
Well, let's see if it has a happy ending, this story. Uh, well, that will declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed and I will invite Mr. Winters to start the ball rolling with his thoughts on this case.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, obviously some of the comments were touching, but realistically, as, as the chair was, was noting, you know, I think she meets the criteria just on its, on its face because the specials, like, exception criteria, um, I won't go through it all because it, it, you know, unlike with the variance, the, the, they, um, you don't have to prove unnecessary hardship, but they generally go to the impact on city services and I think this small ADU here is not, is going to have minimal, especially on Loudon Road relative to everything that's going on there. It's going to have zero, basically zero extra impact and, um, yeah, Ms. Specter Morgan, Specter Morgan went through the ADU requirements with her and she meets them and obviously so did, so did the city, so I'd, I'd be inclined to approve.
Ms. Specter Morgan, your thoughts?
I'm inclined to approve as well. I think all the criteria are met and I think we might need to go through them one by one to make some factual findings, but we can do that in a motion.
Yeah, I'm inclined to get the yes, and when we're done, I have a quick question for, uh, for Dr. Hutton on the ADUs.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with it too.
Uh, I am in favor of the appeal. I think she meets the criteria for a special exception. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I will move to approve, um, finding that the special exception criteria are met specifically. Uh, there's only one ADU. The ADU is not greater than 750 square feet nor less than 600 square feet. It has two bedrooms. There will be one interior door connecting the two units. It meets the minimum lot size and other dimensional requirements. There are no exterior modifications and the owner will occupy one of the units and there's sufficient parking.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We moved in second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The special exception is granted. Hey, this is our night.
It is.
Next case.
So my question for Dr. Hutton quickly, on ADUs, um, is it a statutory requirement that they come in or can you ju-, or could the code enforcement just deem?
No, they're all special, there are special exceptions in every district that they're allowed.
So that would be a state statutory change?
Nope, it's a zoning ordinance requirement.
So the city could say it wouldn't have to come to zoning if the code enforcement deemed it met the criteria, wouldn't?
It was changed, right.
Okay.
And there, there is move in the, in the new code that's being worked on to make it easier to put in ADUs, so.
I've been hearing about this new code for four years.
I know.
Where are we?
Well, that...
But I'm just saying, it is in there.
I'm not sure I'd, I'm not sure I'd even wait for that. I'd suggest to the city council that this is busy work.
Yeah.
If the, code enforcement is perfectly capable of determining whether this, these criteria are not...
So according to the state, it, it can't be a variance. It, it has, it could be a, but the state would allow it as a matter of fact.
The state would allow it as a, as a right, yep. With the, when they enacted the laws to make it easier for ADUs.
Yeah, and there's a, somebody was muttering about a bill to make it even easier, I think. Double zero eighty-one, 2023, 20 Foundry Street, OFP, Office Park Performance District, Foxbrook Holdings LLC is the owner. The owner wishes to operate a secondary charter school and seeks a variance to Article 28, 24, Table of Principal Uses to allow use B1 elementary and secondary schools in an OFP district. Do I have someone here from Foxbrook Holdings or the charter school? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
May we have your name, please?
Sure. I'm John Higgins. I'm the co-founder and executive director of Synergy Academy. Synergy Academy is a chartered public high school, um, soon to be servicing students here in the city of Concord for the 24, 25 school year.
Please proceed.
Sure. Um, I've presented today. Um, I first want to thank everyone here for the last presentation I gave you. Um, we've been working really hard to find a suitable location to provide education to 120 students at a high school level here in Concord. Um, we did get a variance passed for 25 Chanel Drive. Um, and I appreciate all the efforts there. What we did is went back, went through the regulations, hired, went through an engineering process and found that that building, because it was built in 1991, had not had a lot of renovations and supports to fire safety code, regulations and so on and so forth. So we started our search again and we found 20 Foundry, um, which it is listed here as, um, the Fox Holding, and I just want to let you know it's actually Ultra Holdings owns that building. The Fox Brooks Holding is now owned and operated under Ultra Holdings LLC.
That, but you're not the owner of the building?
No.
That would be your potential landlord?
Correct. Yep. Um, and we've been working with the landlord. We've actually had the fire department, um, there as well to do an evaluation of the building. Um, this building was pretty much fully renovated in 2013. Uh, it fits our mission and vision as well. We want to be a service community-based learning operation where we're helping students engage and immerse into the community for service-based learning. This location really would fit that mission and vision of our graduates. Um, it does meet a lot of the codes and standards, so retrofitting, uh, investing hundreds of thousands of dollars into the building is not necessary. Um, it's pretty much, in a lot of ways, a turnkey operation for the school to operate. So I ask for your support in allowing us to operate a nine through 12 charter school at 20 Foundry Street.
Questions from the board?
Why can't the property be used for what it's owned for?
Why can't the property be used for what it's owned for?
Zoned for.
What it's zoned for?
Yep.
Um, I'm not sure it couldn't, um, what I'm asking is for it to be used for the purposes of a school. Um, and currently, right now, there is, um, you know, from an office space, space perspective in the city, um, there is a lot of openings. There's a lot of office space out there available and whatnot. We found this to be the most suitable space to meet the standards for a school. There's a lot of this is about making sure that we can get through the fire safety, homeland security, all of the other processes that we have to be in compliance with. Um, and 20 Foundry Street meets a lot, virtually every one of those standards.
And I understand that, but in order to get a variance, you need to demonstrate that there's something unique about the property that makes it not suitable for the uses it's zoned for. So what is it about this property that makes it not suitable for those uses?
That, in the current market, that it's not able to be rented because at this point in time, there is a, a huge inventory, if you will, of specific office space, so it falls in that category of, you know, a need.
And is there any office space in town that's zoned that would allow the charter school?
Again, it would, no, not, see, that's the difficult part. There is no real zoning process in a way for, for, for us as a charter school coming in. Uh, we don't have a set building like most public systems do. Um, we're trying to find a suitable location that meets all state and federal regulations. Um, and we're trying to do that with, without a foundation of a set school system or municipal buildings. Um, so it, it makes it difficult for a charter school to find a property, um, and meet that standard to the state, to the federal government, um, to all of the other components that we have to do. And 20 Foundry really does that for us and it really, um, will help and support that community. It's really about supporting and propping up the area we want to be in.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'm going to ask, I want to ask Dr. Hutton a question. Uh, is there a zone where charter schools would be allowed by right?
They'd be allowed in any zone that allows a secondary school.
Okay. And then we do have zones that do?
We do have zones that allow schools, yes.
Okay.
Um, that was going to be one of my questions, but, so my other question is, how many students are you, do you, are you chartered for a certain number of students or, or do you just, do you know roughly how many students you're, you're going to be admitting?
Yeah, we, we looked to start in our first year as a target of 65 students.
Sixty-five?
Sixty-five.
Okay.
And then we looked to advance to a, a level of 120 and our cap would be 120 students.
So this space would be up to 120?
Yes.
And is this the building where the Concord pediatric dentist is on the first floor?
It's the, that building is too over. It's a condominium complex and there's three buildings in it.
Oh, it's in that complex?
Yeah, it's in that complex. In 20 Foundry, it's the back building. In Twenty Foundry, it's the back building that's actually facing towards the highway. The top floor will be kind of a professional office space tenant, where people will rent space for a month or so on and so forth.
Oh, so you'd have two of the three floors?
So there's two floors.
Oh, you'd have one floor?
And we'd have the bottom floor.
So you're not just using it for a school, you're using it for a short-term office rental as well?
I'm the executive director of the charter school, I'm not the owner of the building, so it's not what I'm using the building for.
So you, are you not leasing the second floor?
No.
Okay.
Just leasing the first floor.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you know how long this space has been vacant?
It's been over a year at this point, maybe longer.
And then the next question I'm going to ask, you might not know, but maybe couldn't have answered it, but at one point, didn't Hesser College have classroom space in that building or in that neighborhood?
I have no idea.
That was not Hesser, but it was a college.
Was it a college?
It was a college, I can't remember the name of it.
Yeah.
But they had come before the board prior.
And we get approved, yeah, okay, I can recall approving.
Yeah.
College classrooms there, okay.
It's two and a half miles away from NHTI. It's a real, that's another partnership we want to really work with kids to help in the transition and support of a senior in high school. So the location, where it is, we also want to work with, you know, Merrimack School District as well. We're over on that side of the world, so that kind of helps us in supporting kids from that side of Concord as well as the Merrimack District as well.
And it is a, it is a public charter school?
It's a public charter school. It was authorized by the State Board of Education on March ninth of 2023.
Dr. Hutton, I have a question. If you know, there's, there's a few high schools in Concord, probably almost all of them, at least the main ones that we're thinking of pre-existed the zoning, so when they came in and do the zoning, are they basically just putting the zone around where the current high schools are? I mean, or is there other availability for zones for high schools other than what was off, what's already there?
There are other zones available for schools, so schools are allowed in the institutional districts, of which there are numerous institutional districts in the city, as well as some of the other, you know, neighborhood-type zones, so there are other districts that allow for schools.
Okay, so it's not.
There's space in those districts.
I got you. It's not as narrow, it's just.
Correct.
Circle around Concord High School.
Correct.
But there are charters, we've had charter schools come here before, Steeplegate Mall had one at one point, there's one in the.
They needed a variance, too.
They, correct, right?
Yep.
Dick, did you have a question? Any more questions? Anything else you'd like us to know?
Nope, this, we're really excited about bringing this opportunity to kids here in Concord and providing an alternative education for high school students to immerse in our community.
Thank you very much.
We're ready. Thanks.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this appeal? Please come forward. Either way. Swear to tell truth?
I do, William Norton, Leavenfold Street, Concord.
What would you like us to know, Mr. Norton?
I worked with the Taffey family, developed that building, was built for Sanborn Head. It was a corporate office building. Sanborn Head has since been bought and has moved out of town, so the building has been vacant since January, but we've been marketing it for eighteen months.
Speaking of January of this year?
Yeah, January of twenty-three, been marketing it for almost all of twenty-two. It's a two-story building, built for office, and uniquely designed for a large-scale environmental engineering firm with larger offices and so forth, so it has some functional obsolescence. The ownership is Ultra Holdings, which is Al Taffey's son, so the building was built for Sanborn Head. Eight years ago, they decided to do a sale leaseback, they were in some transition. Alan Leif Taffey bought it, and then Sanborn had a seven-and-a-half-year lease with an eighteen-month notice of whether they were going to renew or not. Firm was since acquired and is moving into Boston for its corporate function and combining their Massachusetts and their New Hampshire offices. So it's been a challenge to get anybody to respond to that office space. Hesser College was previously up at Sixteen Foundry, the other building. And they were there for five years in that space, ultimately got acquired by Merrimack County Savings Banks, which runs their operations center in, on the upper two floors of that building with Concord Pediatric Dentistry. The intermediate building is owned by a Reed out of Tennessee and leased by Concord Hospital, Sleep Center, Concord Family Medicine, Physical Therapy, and one other practice.
Questions for Mr. Norton? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Anyone in opposition? Any comments from code enforcement?
No.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a variance for a charter school to go into an office building on Foundry Street. We've heard testimony that the space has been very difficult to market, or difficult enough to market so that in the space of approximately a year and a half, it has not had any takers. Discussion, starting with Mr. Waller. Don't look at me in that tone of voice.
Well, it seems that in the past, we have granted variances in non-institutional districts. So that being said, I guess I would be inclined to, to support it. I really haven't heard any persuasive hardship arguments, so.
Okay.
I agree with the first part of what Nick said, which is we found unique places for to help people house charter schools in, but I did think that Mr. Norton, the last speaker, did say that the way the building was originally designed, it was designed for a specific use for Sanboard Head, and big open spaces for design and engineering, which makes it difficult to make it available for other more broad uses. So I think for me, I see a hint of a hardship with the way the building was designed, but I want to hear from my colleagues about the hardship issue as well.
Well, we know, I have a hunch what Ms. Specter Morgan is going to say.
You want me to go first?
No, let me go first, because I think we're all trying to persuade you.
Pick up your mind, guys.
No, no, I know what I'm saying.
Keep trying.
This is going to be good. I think, I could be corrected, but I believe that the charter schools are, you know, are obviously, there's a change with the amount of charter schools that are coming because of the educational laws, and I forgot what they call it, but the new rules on.
Education Freedom Account.
Education Freedom Account, so we're seeing more, we're going to be seeing more and more charter schools. And charter schools, I think, are different in, in scope than what the zone really considers when they're talking about a secondary school, you know, when you're thinking about, you know, three, four, five hundred, five thousand students, when you're talking about a hundred, what he said, a hundred twenty students max. Putting myself in the shoes of a charter school for a second, I would, it could be a challenge to find a reasonable spot in Concord. I mean, I, I don't doubt their, I can't say, you know, off the top of my head, every institutional district and where they could put it, but it's, it's not, you know, like you could just snap a finger and find the perfect spot. So I have to take their, take them on good faith that, you know, they've searched high and low, and I mean, this, this does seem like a good spot, because it's kind of tucked away, it's not really too close to any neighborhoods, it's, it's off the highway, so it has good access, there's a lot of parking, it's, you know, it could easily be modified for classroom use, so to me, that the building does make sense there for a charter school.
It was a valiant effort. But I don't see the hardship. It may be that we need to revisit our zoning on charter schools and allow them the office district, but right now, we don't. The fact is, we heard there's a lot of office space for rent in Concord, and a lot of it's vacant, so the fact that this one's been vacant for two months doesn't really strike me as something that's a special circumstance, and it's been marketed for eighteen months, but when people are looking for office space, they're looking for office space now, not necessarily in eighteen months. So I think all the variance criteria are met, except hardship, and I would vote to deny.
I think Ms. Specter Morgan's arguments are logically impeccable. But I, I think I'm willing to stretch the definition of a hardship here in the interests of the other, or other goals of the zoning ordinance. I see nothing in this that makes it unreasonable use. I think Mr. Winters makes a very good case, or point about the, the difficulty of the fit of a charter school into the overall notion of a school, which is, in the case of Concord, you go all the way from Bishop Brady to, to St. Paul's, all of which are in neighborhoods that probably maybe have been zoned around them, but never would have been initially. I also think that the, I'm not immune to the argument that they would have a very difficult time finding, or having a difficult time finding another place, and that this is a reasonable and appropriate place. So knowing that I might have to pull out both guns and a sword to defend this, I would vote in favor of a motion to approve. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Send off a few shots in the direction of defending this.
Yeah, I think that, I think the, I think the, as is affirmed by Andrew and, and others, it's not an inappropriate place, given the fact that it's away from neighborhoods, there's parking, it can accommodate the size of the school that they want. At least I heard testimony that would suggest that the unique character of the building, being, having been designed for a very specific type of business, would make it challenging to, to make it available to a broader potential group of tenants, and so with that, I will move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved in second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed?
Nay.
The vote is four to one, with Ms. Specter Morgan in the minority, the variance is granted. And that brings us to case.
No applause.
Yeah, no applause. Gee whiz, guys.
Oh, handshake.
We gotten kind of used to it. Next case is double zero eighty-eight, Forty-five South Main Street, CBTP Central Business Performance District, Bindery Redevelopment LLC. The applicant wishes to install hanging signage exceeding the size allowances of the ordinance. The applicant is seeking a variance to Article twenty-eight, twenty-six-nine-A Table of Maximum Sign Dimensions for Non-Residential Districts to permit 166.5 square feet of total building signage where 150 square feet is allowed. Is there anyone here from?
This, if you could continue this case, we would appreciate it. They need to redesign the signage based on architectural design review comments, so they'd like to be heard in October.
Could we also give them a piece of advice?
You could.
They ought to show us where the Concord coach is going to go? It didn't show in the plans, or at least I didn't see it.
They didn't have that yet when the packets came out, they do have it now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that curiosity, or do we think we need it for?
I think we need it, it was part of their justification.
Yep. And is it just the one sign that they're looking to do?
It is just the one sign that exceeds, exceeds the square footage, yep.
Do they want to go till October?
Yes, please.
Do I hear a motion to recess this case to the Octo, October fourth meeting?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
You mean, how long that agenda is looking?
It's two nights already.
In October?
Yep.
Oh.
And you've now added two to it, so, you know.
Well, should we add it to the second night?
I don't think, I haven't done the split yet, so it doesn't really, I just, I, I know it's going to be two nights, I don't know what the split is yet, because I've just drafted the initial agenda with everything on it, I haven't split them up yet, so it doesn't matter what night you put them on.
All right.
But, but unlike the others, we're giving the notice now, right? So don't, don't we have to say a date certain?
Yes, this one will be heard on October fourth, yep.
Okay.
It just means something else gets brought in.
Oh, got you.
Do you want all this stuff back?
I haven't, we, we haven't got a second.
Oh, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? The case is recessed. That brings us.
Yeah, you're going to get new stuff.
New stuff? Okay.
They'll tell us where the coach is.
Throw away that old stuff.
Throw away the old stuff, we'll get new stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
That brings us to the final case on our agenda this evening, which is case double zero eighty-six, twenty twenty-three, Thirteen Lawrence Street, UIRM Medium Density Residential District. Andrew and Christopher Knight are the owners, and they wish to construct two additional two-family dwellings on a single lot currently containing a two-family dwelling, and they seek variances, two. Article twenty-eight-two-four-H, multiple principal use, principal uses on a single lot to allow three two-family dwellings on a single lot that is not a PUD, and Article twenty-eight-five-two duplex or two-family dwelling to allow three two-family dwellings on a lot having 165.44 feet of road frontage where 450 feet is required, 150 feet per building. Gentlemen, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
Would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Yes, good evening, Chair, members of the board. Brett Allard, legal counsel for the applicant. My name is Chris Knight.
Fire away. Not even literally speaking.
Thank you. So I am joined by the owners, the applicant, Chris Knight, and also Andrew Knight, who's back in the gallery. This is Thirteen Lawrence Street, Tax Map six thirty-four, Lot Z dash thirty-two. It's about 1.8 acres, seventy-seven thousand and change square feet, located in the medium density residential district. It's situated at the corner of Lawrence Street and Lawrence Street Extension. Lawrence Street is a public street, Class V presumably. Lawrence Street Extension is a private road, but it's been declared an emergency lane by the city, so the city does maintain it and plow it. My client owns the underlying dirt, under the private road, the fee, and other lots in the area have a twenty-foot wide access easement to Lawrence Street over that right-of-way. So there's 160 feet of frontage on Lawrence Street, 364 feet of frontage on Lawrence Street Extension. The property is improved with an existing two-family dwelling on the north side of the property near Lawrence Street. That two-family dwelling does have ax, driveway access on Lawrence Street, that was constructed by my client about two years ago. In connection with that, when they, when they built that home, they extended the sewer line about ninety feet down Lawrence Street, down the right-of-way, towards where we're now proposing these two new two-family dwellings. So we are proposing to add two two-family dwellings, as you can see in the plan, they would both have access over the Lawrence Street Extension right-of-way. So this is really similar, and it is one lot, and it's not a condominium, so it's, it's similar to, but not quite a planned unit development, a PUD. For PUDs, two-family dwellings are allowed in PUDs in Concord, as are single-family dwellings and some other residential uses, but in order to be a PUD, under the zoning ordinance, you have to have a mix of multiple different types of uses. And here, we only have two-family dwellings, one existing and two other two-family proposed. So we are asking for a variance from the requirement that it be approved as a PUD, because, again, we don't have a mix of uses, we have one use, we just have three of them on one lot, and then we need a frontage variance as well, 100 feet for, I think, a single family, but it's one and a half times for a two-family, so with three two-families, it would be 450 feet of frontage that we would need. We have 160 feet on Lawrence Street, we do have over 450 feet total, if you count the Lawrence Street Extension private road, but private roads don't count in terms of your frontage requirements, so we do need a frontage variance as well. So I'll very briefly go through the criteria. Granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, there won't be any alteration to the essential character of the neighborhood, these are modestly sized proposed two-family dwellings that are consistent with the character of the area, and two-family dwellings are permitted by right in this zone. We don't see any threat to the public health or safety. If the variances are granted, my client will be extending that sewer line further down the right-of-way to accommodate the two proposed two-family dwellings, and if other property and owners in the area, if their septic's were to fail in the future, they could certainly go through the process to connect to that new sewer line when and if the time comes. As shown on the plan, this is all currently gravel right now, going down that private road, my client would be extending the pavement, as you can see, past that second two-family, so about halfway down the entire length of the private road. And in addition to the extended sewer line and the pavement, currently, there is a twenty-foot right-of-way over this land that the other lots in the area have access rights over to access Lawrence Street Extension. There's a note on the plan that indicates that that twenty-foot right-of-way, my client would be willing to expand the other owner's access rights, so it covers the entire 33-foot width that's shown on the plan. A couple of different reasons for that, one, the existing. One, the existing gravel actually that's there right now is outside the twenty-foot right-of-way, so the traveled way is actually outside the right-of-way. And then expanding that to thirty-three feet gives everyone in the area the right over the entire width of what I'm calling the right-of-way, the private road, which will be where the sewer line is situated and where the expanded pavement will be. So we think these would be benefits to the public and benefits to the other lots in the area, and not contrary to the public interest. Number two, granting the variances will be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of the RM zone as set forth in the zoning ordinance indicates that it's established to accommodate two-family dwellings and PUDs at densities between one to five dwelling units per acre. We have about one point eight acres, which would yield about, at the higher end, at five units per acre, nine units, we're only proposing six. Again, there's two there and four proposed, so we don't think there'll be any overcrowding or congested development. The lot is large enough to support the two new dwellings. Again, we do have five hundred and twenty-four total feet of frontage if you add, at least conceptually, the frontage on the private road, which exceeds the four hundred and fifty-foot requirement, so there is safe and sufficient access, and we are proposing dedicated driveways for each of these two new dwellings. So we think granting the variances would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Number three, granting the variances would do substantial justice, we don't see any injury to the public if the variances are granted, we don't see any gain to the public if the variances are denied, really only loss to the applicant and the public if the variances are denied, because the rest of this property is, is very, this property is pretty large relative to the others in the area, and I was going to get into that when I talk about hardship, but in terms of this criteria, it's really underutilized in terms of this, what's now, I guess, just a backyard, but adding these two new dwelling units to the underutilized portion of the property would add much-needed housing to the city's housing stock, and we think that would do substantial justice when you balance private and public rights. Number four, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. I did submit two letters in regard to this criteria, one is from Joseph Palmizzano, he is a real estate broker with the Maciello Group, and I'm not going to read it line for line there in your packet if you haven't read it already, but to summarize in his expert opinion, these proposed two new dwellings fit within the current characteristics of the neighborhood, and after looking at the plans and looking at the area, and after looking at the entire situation, he concluded that, in his expert opinion, it won't cause, granting the... .............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
So it, it won't be, the lot will remain one lot?
Yes.
Okay. And the, so obviously there's several properties on that Lauren, who have all of their frontage on the Lawrence Street Extension, correct? So should we assume that they pre-existed the code? Because they have, technically, you're saying no frontage on, they have no frontage?
Yeah, they've been there, I would assume they've been there for quite some time and are probably grandfathered, I could be wrong, I haven't looked into the city's file on all of them. Maybe some of them came before you at a prior time and received frontage variances?
Okay.
One or the other.
Well, you're allowed to have houses on private roads, whether it's city-maintained or not.
I don't know what the code says about that.
But, because they're saying there's zero frontage, tech, you're saying if it's, if it's a private road, that the frontage doesn't count?
Right.
Under the Concord zoning, has to be on a public road?
Has to be on a public road. And most of those houses in the back, I just look, were built in the fifties and sixties, so...
So they would have been, they're quote grandfathered?
Right. If the, if the, if the private road frontage counted for our purposes, we wouldn't need a frontage variance.
So is this, in considering how unusual this situation is, is, is the fact that it's a quote private road, but the city maintains it as an emergency, is that, is that common or is that unusual?
I think emergence, so emergency lanes are essentially situations where the city without, the city can maintain the road and plow the road without doing it for five years and then creating a Class Five road. Because if they, if they do it without it being an emergency lane and the city repairs and maintains the road for five years, it actually converts to a Class Five public road, and now the city has a statutory obligation to continue to maintain it, at least theoretically in perpetuity. If the city declares it an emergency lane, they can maintain it at their discretion as they see fit, plow it, without the burden hanging over their head of the five-year conversion to a Class Five road.
So they could withdraw their...
That is, that is fairly common.
Okay, so they could withdraw their emergency tech, I'm not saying they would, but they could theoretically withdraw the emergency declaration at any time and then stop maintaining it?
Sure, and then maybe a road maintenance agreement be formed among the landowners because it'd be necessary at that point, maybe my client would try to do a dedication and try to have it converted to a Class Five road and go through that process with the city council. There'd be another of alternative options at that point.
Thanks.
Questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone care to be heard in favor of this appeal? Anyone care to be heard in opposition to? Please come forward.
I'll be the first one in the bullpen.
All right.
How's that?
That's fine.
You seem to have a weapon, though.
I'd like to give you a little bit of background about that road.
May I first swear you in?
Yep.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Oh yeah, I do.
May we have your name, please?
William Edward Parker. I live at eighteen Lawrence Street, which is two houses beyond Lawrence Street Extension.
All right.
Originally, the property was all owned by a woman by the name Mrs. Groves. When she passed away, it was left to her daughter who sold it, well, subdivided it, brought the, her house out of the, out of the old footprint. The back used to be all a big paddock at one time for horses. But the daughter wanted to try to put in six duplexes and the city shot it down, okay? They wanted to run, the street has, the right-of-way there has no utilities going up other than one water line that Mr. Magoo, who lived in the last house down, originally ran it up to, for everybody to tie into. So that's what's in there, other than their own septic systems. The roadway was actually owned by the dirt road, okay? And that's what this is, it's a dirt road, was owned by Mrs. Groves. So it became a right-of-way for these people to use. So I don't know where the law's right in between, now Mr. King owns all of that, so he owns that, that strip of land, but it's still listed as a right-of-way, okay? There's a big congestion problem here because it's a dead-end dirt road with no turnaround at the end, okay? The house that he just put in on the corner, it was a duplex, and, and they had, one family moved in and instead of having just a couple of cars or maybe three, they had as many as six, they were hanging out into the street, you had to go around them, okay? And the people were slobs, all right? Finally, they got rid of them, okay? And, you know, they now have three young women in there that are going through, through the local college here. But that dirt road, it, you know, if they're going to put housing up in there, there's, there should be some requirement by the city to have them put utilities all the way up through, and then everybody can tie into it, and that whole mess is, is sealed and done, and then the road's sealed up afterwards. I mean, that makes common sense. The variances were put there so that, you know, people would adhere to it. Now, because you're trying to put, you know, five pounds of junk into a one-pound bag, okay, is basically what you're trying to do by putting more duplexes in there, he's going to put two more in now, and I'm assuming that there's going to be enough room there to put a few, few more in there, but I'm not positive about that because I haven't seen the, the lot plans for all of this. But the whole thing is, is congested already, and now you're going to make a bad situation worse, all right? And regardless of what, you know, they, they stated here, it's not a good idea, guys, all right? And, and a lot of the neighborhood is not impressed with the whole thing, all right? It's, I think there's only one person that I know of that's in favor of it, only because he's going to pave up to the end of his driveway and he's going to be able to get utilities into his home, all right? But the other people, and, and he talked with about Cindy and, and Bob, they don't even live there anymore, they sold the place and got out of there, okay? They moved to Florida. So, you know, their statements of being in favor, they were in favor because they were going to get out of there, all right? And, you know, I mean, there's a lot of unclear things to the residents. This, this is an area that's quiet, okay? It's, it's a dead-end cul-de-sac road, Lawrence Street, it's a dead-end dirt road with no turnaround, okay? And we're used to seeing wildlife in there, we've got all kinds of deer, and we even got a little six-hundred-pound black bear that comes around, and when he's, you know, rumbling around the back area, the girls go out and tickle him behind the ear, I don't know, but... Now they're going to tick, you know, clear it all out so that, all you're going to see is buildings and no green space. That's not what we signed up for when we bought our homes here, mine, I've been there for twenty years.
Mr. Parker, we're coming up on ten minutes out of your five.
Well, I'm just trying to give you a background, but you guys got to make a decision on this stuff.
Yeah, I think we've got your background.
All right, so, all right, I'll, I'll pass it on to the next guy.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard? Please come forward.
So just for disclosure, this is my client, but I'm not voting anyway, but I'm just too honest to not say it.
Well, we appreciate that. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes.
May we have your name, please?
Gary, last name Handy.
Handy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Andy.
Andy.
An A.
What would you like us to know, Mr. Handy?
Excuse me?
What would you like us to know?
Well, I guess some of the questions I was wondering about is, as Bill mentioned, there's a single line, two-inch water line that runs from where, where the city water goes down Lawrence Street, and we get our water tapped off of that.
Where, where do you live, Mr. Handy?
We live at six Lawrence Street Extension.
Okay, so you're on the extension.
So that's the only water or, that we get, or really, the, the plowing is, is not really adequate, but it gets done. So I'm wondering if these houses are coming in, a number of them, what would that do what would that do to our water pressure and the availability of water that, that we have? Also, I think a, something that kind of connects, something that you might, that is maybe more personal than, gonna miss the wrong word, but with the adding of, of the various houses that are in the area, it's going to change the complexion of, of our community. We have a really great area to do walk-in, individuals that know each other and that kind of spirit. But the addition of all those houses is going to change the nature of our community. And I don't think that the way the road is being talked about being put in is going to really adapt to that kind of change. There's gonna, I, it seems as though they will be receiving the benefit of a approved road for their project without having to do anything for it. And so they have, don't have, I guess, enough frontage on Lawrence Street. So by co-opting the extension, I guess they're trying to get the number of feet that way. But not being an approved lot, I don't know why that would work for them. So I'm wondering about that, wondering about the safety with more cars. If you have 10 units and, or, excuse me, 10 individual houses with five cars for each house, you can see that, that'd be 50 cars. And that, that would present, I think, an impact upon us. And of course, the water is important, I, I don't know what it would mean. City, I think, has a three-inch pipe, we have a two-inch, but can you do that? I don't, I don't even know if you can do that. I, I don't know about trash removal. I used to see people who lived in the house up above there that they just built. The people get out, get in their truck, drive through the parking, or I mean, the lot. And, and that's how they would get out. If they were boxed in from behind, the truck would just pull all the way around the house. So I know I, I maybe have a lot more to say, but I also know that you are trying to keep time. So those are some of the things I would mention.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
On the extension there, is it mostly, are there, are those single-family houses or duplexes?
No, they're all single-family. The first duplex was the one, at, at least in our area. There is a duplex down as you could get toward Airport Road.
Oh, so even up on Lawrence Street, it's mostly single families?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes.
May we have your name, please?
Kevin Cottley. I live on Lawrence Street Extension at the end. We bought the house back in 2017. My understanding was if there was anything to be built on those, that lot, the utilities be ran down the street, the street would be paved. They're proposing to go halfway down the street and stop with that. That's a concern. I agree with my two neighbors, what they had to say. Are we gonna be back here in two years to put another two, three houses in there? You know, and that's a concern. So the quality of life is gonna change. There was a nightmare with the house on the corner, they finally got the people out that were parked all over the place. And if you weren't paying attention, you would hit one of their cars leaving in the middle of the night. I got a question for Ms. Morgan. You made stipulations on two of the-
No, no, no questions of the board, I'm afraid, other than about this specific case.
You can make a statement.
Okay, can I make a statement?
You bet.
There were stipulations on two of the people that came before the board earlier tonight that they had to be owner-occupied. Why isn't that going here?
Well, that's not what they're asking for. We, we, we haven't granted, or not granted, but that, that's not part of what they're asking for.
Basically, that's, that's what I have to say.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Any comments from code enforcement?
Nope, I, I have the water, that is, that, that two-inch drops to an inch and a half. I was looking at the water mains and it is a six-inch on Lawrence Street, if you wanted to know the detail of the water service.
Two-inch drops?
Two-inch, it drops to an inch and a half, actually, after number two, it looks like.
You mean as it runs down?
As it runs down the street, it drops.
Down extension?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And this doesn't go to the planning board?
It does, I think it needs, Brett, this needs site plan, doesn't it? Or, I don't remember what Heather's decision was on this.
I don't know that we discussed that, I have a few clarifications.
Yes, sure, did you have anything else?
Nope, that was all I was adding.
Oh, but I have more staff questions.
Well, go ahead.
Okay, so my first question is, is it going to the planning board? Because if it is, I feel good that these issues are gonna be addressed. And if it's not, I have some real concerns about water pressure, green space, and traffic. So I think that's a really important thing for us to know.
I don't know that we discussed that, I know multi-families would go to the planning board, where you have two, two families, I'm just now thinking on the fly, I, I don't know.
I don't know that they would.
I guess I would defer to code administration to make a decision on that. In terms of connecting to the water line, and when these two homes are built and connected to the water line, they're gonna have to pull permits for that. And I imagine the capacity is gonna be addressed at that point. And it could be that a determination is made that increased capacity is necessary, and that's something my client would have to consider. But that's gonna be hashed out by engineering at that time. Again, but to answer the question about whether it goes, this goes to the planning or not, I guess I would defer to, to staff on that, at least in the, for the-
I don't think it does.
I don't think it does either. And I'm not sure how much, when, when you hook to a private line, I'm not sure if that gets the same level of engineering review as if they were hooking to the main and the street.
And is there green space requirements in the zoning ordinance, or is that all in site plan?
That's all in subdivision.
Subdivision.
Can you explain again why, maybe you said this, but I'm still wrapping my head around it, why can't you, why aren't you, or why can't you do a PUD?
We can't do a PUD because a PUD requires a mix of uses. So if we were proposing a three-family and a two-family, we could do a PUD, because that's two different kinds of uses. But if you're just proposing one type of use, it can't be a PUD. So, and PUDs would go to, to site plan.
Yep.
So, you know, we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place here, at least with respect to that issue. I would say that with respect to the traffic coming in and out, to the extent this would be discussed during site plan review, it'll be safer after we're done, once the pavement is laid down and the traveled way is expanded for two-way traffic coming in and out, where it's currently narrow or gravel, it'll be wider pavement. So it's gonna be a better situation in terms of traffic. There also are a number of other duplexes in this area on Lawrence Street, in the immediate area, at least four of them. And to the extent we have to, to the extent anyone ever considers adding more, we'd have to come back for other variances. So I don't, you know, really feel the need to get into what's gonna happen in the future hypothetically, because there's a million different variables that could affect that. But we are expanding the sewer line down another 90 feet. The water line is going to be addressed, if not during site plan review, if that's what staff determines, then when my client goes to pull a connection permit. Laura, in terms of green space, a PUD, I think, requires 40 feet of separation between buildings. I don't know what we're at here, but I think it's pretty close. It's, it's probably either 30, 35, 40 feet. Obviously, PUDs also require perimeter buffers, and you get into a whole bunch of other stuff. But at the end of the day, the PUD requirements would allow up to nine units on this lot. So what we're off, what we're offering is, is significantly less dense than what a PUD would, even if we went to the planning board.
Yeah. Thank you.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request to add two, two-family units along a, what is a, essentially a private road, which is, I guess, is it, it's a deeded right-of-way, or is it a?
It's a, it's a private road. The land is owned by my client.
So it's an easement?
Everyone else has an easement.
Okay.
Who's not my client.
Right, okay, so it was the easement that was to be expanded?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. We have a private road with an easement for access to people who are further down than the appellant's buildings are. We have heard testimony that they have enough room and enough access, and the road is maintained to build the buildings. But the frontage that they are allowed under the ordinance is only the frontage along the public street. Start this one with Andrew. Or not?
Yeah, I, I, I'm just thinking, I'm just kinda gathering my thoughts.
No thinking, this is the zoning board.
I, I feel uneasy about this. I, I certainly see that the, the parcel is, has a unique shape and a unique size. So I, I certainly think that a case can be made for a variance. But I'm, I, I feel like this is gonna really impact the character of this neighborhood by putting two more duplexes right on this, on this road. And we have a number of questions about the, the utilities, the, the services, the road. I think, I think it was well-presented by the applicant. But, and, and it seems an oddity that, you know, why they would, why they can't do a PUD just because of the mix of use, I don't really understand the rationale for that. But it would be nice, I'd feel much more comfortable if this was going through the planning board. We can't make that happen, but since it's not, that, I feel like we're, we're kind of being asked to do planning board-type work, which I don't really have the, the experience or skill set for. So I'm, I'm pretty uneasy about it as presented.
Laura?
That's exactly what I was gonna say. I see the special circumstances. I don't know that having three principal dwellings on a property is a reasonable use. I have no reason to doubt that it will not diminish surrounding property values, because that's the only evidence before us. But I have a real concern with how this is going to affect the existing character of the neighborhood. And I think we heard some valid concerns from the neighbors about water pressure and green space and traffic. Obviously, we can't make them extend utilities down the road, the planning board couldn't do that either. It's their property, they get to develop it. And we don't, you know, we can't make the units be owner-occupied because it's not an ADU. But I think this is going to impact the character of the neighborhood in an adverse manner, and I would be inclined to deny.
Yeah, I have very similar concerns. This strikes me as more of a subdivision project, where the types of things who are raised here would be part of the, the planning process. And so there's probably a better way to get there than going through the zoning board.
I agree.
Very good. I find what my colleagues have to say persuasive. I think they certainly have a unique lot and could make an argument that that creates the pretext for hardship. But there do seem to be a lot of unresolved issues here that we can't really grasp. I don't know what's gonna happen to the water pressure, and I don't know whether or not these buildings are gonna fit in. We don't have a subdivision, so we don't really have a notion of the, how the density would compare to the rest of the requirements of the zoning in that area. So I'm afraid I would be inclined to vote to deny as well. Does anyone care to make a motion?
I just make a point of order.
Sure.
That there's two variances?
Could we just be continued so we can have more time to figure out what the planning board situation is and the utility situation, and then come back at a future meeting, maybe with more clarification that would ease everyone's mind?
I would have no objection to that.
Does anyone on the board have a problem with that?
Would it be noticed again?
If you continue it, it doesn't have to be noticed again.
That's about as close to a vote as I've ever heard. From TV.
Like Wile E. Coyote.
But you have a November meeting? Okay.
November meeting? All right, is that satisfactory to the board?
Sure.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to continue the case to the November meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No. Oh, sorry, aye.
You get one vote.
I know, I know, I'm sorry.
This is not Chicago. One vote on one side.
Move to approve the- It's recent last minutes.
Just one final word, folks.
Thank you, beg pardon?
Public hearing is closed.
Continuance was the best option here. I think you were sure to deny because there's too many unanswered questions and all the residents are upset about this.
Okay.
You've got people there that got five houses on that.
Thank you, sir, I'm afraid we have more business to do.
Yeah, well, I might be right, but I also am a citizen here.
Yeah, but you're not chairing the meeting, I am, and you're out of order.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Where were we? We were approving the minutes.
I approve the minutes, I think we need, did we vote?
And the notices of decision?
We need a second, longer motions was second.
So all in favor of the approval of the minutes?
I second the motion to approve the minutes.
We're a little discombobulated here, I know there was a motion, and that was next.
I second it. Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. And how about the, I believe we got the rationale?
We have notices of decision to approve as well.
Yeah. Do I hear?
Could I just mention this?
Just a second, please. Could I, could I hear a motion to approve those drafts?
Motion to approve the draft notices of decision.
Is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yes, sir, Mr. Andy, what can we do for you?
There's a-
Subdivision?
Yes, what am I trying to, the map, the survey map, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Survey map that I got here, I think I paid $5 for it at the-
Engineering office?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, it might be helpful for you.
You could talk to staff about that later.
Yeah, we'll bring it to the November meeting and submit it to the record, then.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anything else?
The calendar for 2024, did anybody have any? I didn't shift the dates in the 4th of July this year because you re, you put them back this year. So for next year, I kept them where they were. But you, technically, the calendar is yours to approve, so I provided the 2024 calendar in your packet so it can get approved.
You did?
Yeah, I saw that.
I can tell you that it is unlikely any of us will be here on July 3rd. I would suggest we move that to the next week.
I won't be here July 3rd.
We did that this year, and you all moved it back.
Well.
Really?
Yeah.
That's because my sister had to be here.
It was sort of an odd. I think it was-
Historically, you folks have always done the week after the 4th of July, because everybody goes on vacation. But this year, we did it the week of the 4th of July, which was really odd.
It was, I think we just, because of the vacations that year.
Okay, so move it to the week after.
I move to make it July 10th.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I missed it, it was still at 6:00 PM, right?
Yeah.
Great, it's worked out. Are you happy with that?
Oh, I love it.
Yeah. When is our second October meeting?
Yeah, I have a question about that.
It's the second, it's gonna, so, it's gonna be the 13th, because you have this room reserved for the first and second Wednesday of the month. So we're going to need to utilize them this month. I had run that by the chair because-
So we're meeting the 27th, the 4th, and the 11th?
Yep.
Wait, I'm sorry.
13th is a Friday.
Nope, okay, the 11th, sorry.
So I'm not available on the 11th.
Okay. Jerry, and blah, 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 blah.
I'll be sending an email.
Yeah, I'll be sending an email.
Yeah, yeah, I did, I did suggest that we go to two meetings for, for October.
Oh, for sure.
It's easier if I know in advance.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Do you have our packets for next meeting, or is it gonna be delivered?
Of course I do.
I have it penciled in on both.
Yeah, that's good.
Have you had the packets tonight?
Yeah, for, for the 27th.
Oh, great.